Good evening, everyone. Today is February 24th, 2015. City Council is now in session. If you do speak for the record, state your full name and we'll proceed. We do have a quorum here. We have a couple out tonight. And Mr. Garrett's out for one of his good friends passed away, so he's down in Peru to schedule things. And then Marty said he wasn't going to be here, he was going to be gone. So, we do have a quorum and we'll go on. The common council, regular meeting was January 27th, 27th on 2015. Does anybody have any corrections on the minutes or additions? If not, I will entertain a motion to accept them as printed.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Five, zero. Okay. The Board of Public Works and Safety met January 22nd and also on February 5th of 2015. Mrs. Banley for information only. And if anybody has any questions or concern, I'll be glad to answer them. If not, we will move on to the public hearing. Does anybody have any questions on the Board of Public Works and Safety? We don't have those till she prints them next meeting. She emailed them.
I emailed them and printed them. There's a copy later in front of you.
Oh, we do? Okay, then we'll back up. Does anybody have any questions on the Board of Public Works and Safety? No. Okay, we did meet yesterday, so usually we don't get done that quick.
You're welcome.
So, it's usually the following meeting. But, we have them. Does anybody have any corrections to the meetings on February 23rd? We had a special meeting with Terry Lee. Does anybody have any corrections or additions to that meeting? Do I have a motion to go ahead and approve those as printed?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Okay, five, zero. Okay. Now we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. And the public hearing is open as I speak for an alley vacated for V&amp;M Hoffman Enterprises for Mr. Grimm and your Richard Grimm is correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to defer this to Andy. Do you want me to have Casey come up first on this to speak or open it up to the public? Such we know what's going on for Casey maybe?
For informational purposes, maybe have Casey explain where it is.
Okay. As Andy just stated, Perkins, the attorney, we're going to have Casey Coles, the executive director, come up here and give us the information we need to know on this alley to, that is being petitioned to close.
I am Casey Coles, Executive Director of the Plan Commission. And Mr. Grimm had come into my office and asked, was asking questions about his real build, started out by him rebuilding a barn that had been wind damaged. And he started discussing his home. His home actually sits right on the property line, to the extent where the gas meter probably sits in the actual alleyway, if not a portion of the home. So we started looking at his flats and he started asking about vacating the alleyway. This particular area is a little bit confusing. I did email all of you the flats and I wanted to make sure that you were kind of clear on what's already been vacated. The alley itself is in Pfizer's addition, but Mr. Grimm's property is not. Mr. Grimm's property was actually cut out a farm ground a long time ago and it is not part of Pfizer's addition. Well, I guess I'll say common law rule or the rule with vacating alleys is whomever owns lots inside that subdivision are the people who receive the land once an alley or street are vacated. So in Mr. Grimm's case, he has spoken to V&amp;M Enterprises and they agreed to petition to vacate this alleyway so that at a later date, he can actually work with them to procure title for this area of this particular alley. The reason why it's a very small portion of the alley is because throughout the years, people have come in and vacated a lot of the different alleys in the streets. So that is the short and narrow of the confusing plot over by the ceiling.
Well, that makes it clear now. I mean, with the picture here, it makes it a lot more presentable. To me, it does. Any questions? Since we've already got it, is everybody in favor of going ahead and vacationing the movie?
Is that one six, 2015?
Yes.
All in favor of it? Voting for the motions on the floor to vacate the alley? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now I entertain a motion to pass ordinance.
Do you have a ordinance?
Yeah, I don't even have it.
Six, 2015.
Six.
Zero, six, 2015.
Make a motion for the first reading of ordinance six dash 2015.
By title only?
Yeah.
Okay, and the motion on the floor for the reading of six dash 2015 Hoffman and Grimm Alley Vacation, or Vacation, Vacated? Does it have second?
Second.
First, okay. All in favor? Five, zero. Okay. Ordinance number six dash 2015, ordinance Vacating Public Ways. Part of a north-south alleyway within the original and subsequent flats of the city of Rochester in Rochester Township, Fulton County, Indiana. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to have the second reading by title only.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Or, ordinance number six dash 2015, ordinance Vacating Public Ways. Part of a north-south alleyway within the original and subsequent flats of the city of Rochester, Indiana. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to have the third reading of ordinance number six dash 2015.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and have the third reading of ordinance six dash 2015 about that one.
Second. All in favor? Five, zero. Ordinance number six dash 2015, ordinance Vacating Public Ways. Part of a north-south alleyway within the original and subsequent flats of the city of Rochester, Indiana. Any discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion to go ahead and pass ordinance six dash 2015 Hoffman Grimm to vacate the alley.
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Okay. Five, zero. It's vacated. You can stick around if you want, you can leave if you want. Very fine. Okay, let's move on to Communications. Casey Coles, do you want to go ahead and give a report here for Communications?
I gave you all copies of our annual report. Every year, normally in January, I'll come see the legislative bodies with this and this year I decided to wait until February, mostly because I knew Mr. Grimm was going to be in front of you for the vacation and thought I would just come up once. Basically, every year, we do an annual report. This shows you how many permits we did in 2014 versus 13, so you can kind of see the difference. I also had Heather break it down into townships to where you can see the different townships, which ones we issued the most permits in, what was actually being built. And then I have her further break it down into the incorporated areas. So, 2014, we issued 537 permits versus the 2013, 604. You can see in Rochester Township, we issued 279, 202 of which were in the city of Rochester. And then you can see how those are broke down. The others, again, are just, those are things that we have listed over here in the box on the left-hand side, decks, porches, sheds, there's just so many to list, we'd have a 10-page report. You can see where we had 45 total splits. That's not necessarily cities, pretty much in the county. Those would be land splits. I have five acres, I split off an acre for Little Susie to build a house. We had one plan petition, Plan Commission petition, and 45 BZA petitions. There were 42 development standard variances, 14 of which were in the city of Rochester. Six special exceptions, three of which were in the city. We took in a total of $27,401.96 in 14. And, I normally like to find, city building permits were $7,594.65. So that kind of shows you the breakdown of all of that versus 2013. And again, the difference between our fees really is your permits and your fee structure. Just because you guys go by the square foot and by the number of inspections, that's how much a permit costs. So when we have larger projects, the Schaefer Building, you know, when Walmart came in, Kroger, those are larger permits, larger costs. So, that's mostly the difference between when you see a bigger number in 13 versus 14. Any questions?
Any questions? Anything else?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to Lori Pollak. You're welcome to the meeting tonight.
I'm Lori Pollak from Fulton County Council on Aging. We're doing this hopefully every year for a little annual review for 2014. I gave everyone a packet. The first page is called the Operating Data Report for 2014. If you'll locate that. This is something that we do for the whole year, something that we use for our annual reports, but it's some good information, kind of a good comparison. At the very bottom, it shows our year-to-date totals and our previous year, so we can kind of preview, do a quick Snapchat of, or a snapshot of the previous year compared to the current year. We had a slight decrease, about 2%, which isn't huge. So 2014, we did 44,147 trips, just in, just for Fulton County residents. At the side there, it's kind of a good breakout for showing each quarter what percentage we're taking to work, what percentage are the senior population, and then the rest is the public. So, we average about 20, 21% that we take for our ridership to work, which I think is pretty interesting. So I think this is a good snapshot of just overall what we do. Our rides currently are a dollar for the city per trip. So if you go to home to Walmart, it's a dollar. Walmart to home, it's another dollar. If you're 60 and older, donations are appreciated, but it's not mandatory. So, we try to keep it pretty reasonable so that the public can afford it. It's also $3 within the county, so if you want to go outside the city limits, it's a $3 trip. We also have tickets that you can buy, 12 rides for $10, so essentially you're getting two free rides there. But, another interesting thing, I thought, just looking at how many rides that we do, we have about, approximately about $500,000 operating budget that we work off of. It fluctuates a little bit. But just some of our funding sources, I think is interesting. We have 35% of our operating cost comes from a federal grant through NDOT. And about 23% of that comes from the state portion. And then the rest of it, the rest of the 42% is left up to, we get a city allocation, a county allocation, we get United Way allocations. We do bill Medicaid for medical transportation, so we do use the medical runs outside of the county. We also have an Area 5.3B grant. And then the rest is our program service, which is our bus fares that we charge. So, just kind of an interesting overview of that. The next one is Transportation Units. It shows from 2004 to 2014, kind of the span and how our rides have gone. So 2004, we did 22,000 rides and all the way to 2014, we're up to 44,000. So, you know, just every year improving, adding vehicles and so, I just thought that was interesting. The next part is our transportation costs for 2014. This is something that we do every year. It shows our operating costs in relation to our total trips. So, right now, per trip charge or per trip cost to us is $9.97. So, you know, funding is very crucial to keep the fares the way they are. And that's kind of our goal there. We want to make it as affordable for the whole population that we can. But we have improved on that. 2012, it was $10.77 per trip. In 2013, it was $10.62. So, each year, we've improved in efficiency and things like that. Something that, some exciting things that's happened in 2014, we were able to upgrade our radio system, so we're all digital now, so we have the most up-to-date technology that we can have right now. It also came with a GPS tracker, so we're able to track our vehicles, where they're at, how fast they're going, things like that. So I think for safety and efficiency, that's a big improvement. We also had, Fulton County RMC was able to donate a poll and labor. It's a lot higher than our old antenna and they were able to set that for us. So, the span for our radio span has improved a lot. I think we can get up to 35 to 40 miles out. So, it's nice for our drivers that are out, you know, in the middle of the county and kind of ways away from the city limits. So, that's really nice to have too. Another thing that I just shared in here is, it's a couple of press releases. We have meetings with all of the public transportation agencies in Indiana and we all meet about legislation and what's going on. I was talking about the state portion that we get, it's called PMTF, which is the Public Mass Transportation Fund. That's been at a consistent amount for the last few years. And there's a bill on the House floor to increase that from 42.5 million to 60 million. So, we're working with letting our legislators know what we're doing for the county and for our riders and kind of getting our word out. So, just kind of good information to, for you guys to see. Couple other things that I also attached, something you may not have seen before. The first one is our Riders Guide that we give to every one of our riders. It kind of has some of our rules and regulations that we can follow. Being courteous, being on time, calling at least an hour in advance. You know, we are public transportation, we work off a demand response, you know. So, just because you call and you want to go somewhere in five minutes doesn't necessarily always happen. It just depends on how busy we're at that time, so we try to accommodate the best we can. I think the biggest thing is if you call 24 hours in advance and you know you're going to have an appointment, that's the best bet to getting somewhere on time. But, you know, you can see here, we do take people to the grocery store, we just try to limit them. And we also, you know, service animals are permitted and different things like that. So it's just good information for all of our riders to know what rules to follow and how to go about that process. So, the next one is for our Activities portion, which is a difference than Transpo. But, we do have a lot of activities that we offer. We average weekly about 70, 80, 70 to 80 of our seniorcitizens.com. Not always doing the same thing, but a lot of them come and eat the daily meals that are provided through Area 5. And a lot of different activities, bingo, movies, exercise group is now grown to like 25 to 30. So, there's a lot of different stimulating activities. Not everybody, I guess, you know, likes to do a craft, but, you know, we try to provide that for anybody that wants to. But I think that was interesting, just to kind of sit down and think, gosh, how many seniors do come and visit our facility every week? And so, I think that was good to share with everybody. I also wanted to say, I appreciate, you know, any issues that we've ever had, you know, calling one of the city workers or Mayor Smiley. I just appreciate your responsiveness and just trying to keep the building as safe and up-to-date as possible and just provide a safe environment for all of our patrons that visit there. You know, we have a lot of people that come in and out, just not senior citizens. We have United Ministries Outreach Office in there and also the food pantry. So, there's a lot of traffic every day. So, we appreciate any support there. Anybody have any questions for me?
I got a question. How's the carpet? Do you have a date?
I know they've ordered it. We haven't been in touch, yeah, it's been ordered, so we're really excited about that. So, we haven't heard back from them yet. So hopefully soon and they're willing to work around our schedule. So, that's, that's nice. So we're really excited about that. Yeah.
And then the siding is supposed to get done as soon as the weather breaks?
Yeah, which is fine. I don't think there's going to be any further damage to it, just with the winter. So that's, yeah, yeah. I wouldn't want to do it in this weather anyway. So.
Well, I appreciate you coming and giving us a report.
Yeah. Anytime you have any questions, feel free to call or stop in. We encourage anybody to take a transport once, just to kind of see how it works, so.
My garage is really working out great, so.
It's been wonderful and it's, it's really saved on the wear and tear and fuel. You know, you don't have to let them sit and run for 20 minutes before you are able to get going. So, that's really helped a lot. It's really nice.
Did you have, getting your new vehicles in yet?
There's two vehicles coming. I know they've been ordered. It usually takes 18 months. It's a long process. So every year, we sat out a year in ordering a vehicle and it's just amazing how much the miles rack up pretty quickly doing that many trips. So, every year, we're trying to do a replacement vehicle for that. So, we're getting ready to finish up a grant that's due next week for another low-floor minivan for the following year, kind of keep that consistent.
How many vehicles do we have? 13 or 14?
We have 12.
12?
Yep.
Sold a couple of the old ones in.
We did, yeah. The, one of the vehicles, I think our highest mileage vehicle has about 222,000 miles on it, so that'll be a replacement. So, so far, 2014 was a decent year. 2013 was a high repair year, a lot of transmissions. So, 2014, we did pretty well. So we're hoping to keep that going.
Great. Any other questions?
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you. Okay. Chief Butler, do you have a report for the council?
Yeah, I handed a report out, I wanted for the month of January. Structure fires two in the city, one in Newcastle. Auto fire alarms, one in the city, two in Rochester Township. One vehicle fired in the city. Calls for smoke, one in the city, one in Rochester Township. Did one fire investigation in the city. Accidents, one in the city, four in Rochester Township. Medical assist, 18 in the city, 18 in Rochester, eight in Rochester Township, one in Richland Township. We drove the ambulance eight times back to the hospital. We were called for two lip assists. We did one ice rescue in the city. We had three CO checks in the city. Canceled runs, one in the city. One in Rochester Township, one in Henry Township. Had a total of 51 calls and one drill.
Thank you, chief. Any questions for Chief Butler? If not, we'll move on to Chief Schott.
All right, for the month of January, we had 28 total accidents, with three of those being personal injury. There were 119 total warnings issued, 80 total offenses, with 24 of those being traffic and 47 being criminal, nine being juvenile. Our officers drew 53 case reports. We had 623 calls for service, 34 lockouts, nine total towed vehicles and 23 people incarcerated. And then you'll see the list of various crimes that people were lodged for in the month of January.
Regulations and new ones?
As always, there's never, never a dull moment with that, right? Other news, I guess, we do have our Facebook page, the Police Department, we have a Facebook page now up and running, so hopefully we can get some good press out of that. We did get a vest grant for our dog, for our police dog. And, I believe the paper's going to run that, so is the Shoppers Guide. But part of the grant, a stipulation is before they give you the vest, you have to do a press release. And then after they give you the vest, you have to do a press release. So, we just threw it on our Facebook page and had pretty good response from it. And like I said, the dog that we're going to be getting, we're not going to get that until September. So, I think that's about it. It's been pretty quiet. I'm sure most of you heard about the pursuit and all, all that stuff last week that went all over town and...
It went over town.
Yeah, it did, didn't it? Yeah. Why didn't you stop, just jump out and stop them?
I was thinking about it.
I know.
That guy's always...
Other than that, that's about all I have unless you have any questions.
Brian Goodman, do you have anything on the Fedco?
Yeah, Fedco met February 5th, reporting a checking account balance of 148, 606, 98. Operating reserve balance of 107,393, 47. Terry presented the 2015 budget of note. The CDED was up this year, so they were able to get a little more for small business and entrepreneurship development. The lawsuit against Rochester Iron and Metal is over. It was a favorable outcome for them, but they're done with that. Rapid View and R&amp;R Visual are doing well. And the winery, Schonwalt Tears, they've also become a distributor for South Bend chocolates and also a distributor for Watchfire Signs, who, they do primarily LED signs. I spoke about Ag Drainage before. They were the company of Illinois that was interested in the Superior Sample. That deal fell through, but they're still interested in this, in the market and the region here, but right now it's on the back burner, so hopefully something will come of that later on. And you guys know about, we're, there is interest in the Hartshafter and Marx Building, which, we'll talk a little bit about that tonight. That's moving forward. And the last report I had on American Axel is, there's really, there's not anyone there, but there are a lot of contractors going in, moving in equipment. Yeah, I don't know when, when they'll be starting up, but hopefully soon. And that's it, that's all I have.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions?
Who is the Ag Drainage dealer in the business?
Ag Drainage.
Oh, that's what they're named. Okay. Because we just partnered with a company called ADS, with Ag Drainage also, so I was kind of wondering.
Okay. Terry Lee, do you have anything while you're here for Rochester Redevelopment Commission?
We've got things moving along with the Safe Routes to School Grant, the NDOT Grant. We've selected the contractors there. They've been out for some of the site surveys at the schools to monitor where the kids are coming into the schools from in terms of on foot. We've applied for the planning grant from OCR the end of January. They did contact us and request some additional information, which we got to them right away. And we think we'll find out about that within the next three weeks or so. We've done the contractor selection on that also, so as soon as we're okay by OCR, we'll be getting some of that planning piece started. We're working closely with the Main Street Organization from the Chamber and preparing some polls for downtown property owners and stuff like that to see what kind of inventory and interest we have from the current property owners in terms of near or future investment in their properties. We will probably want to talk to the council about an application by May 1st of, for a DNR, RTP, recreational trails program grant for the extension of the nickel plate from 18th up to 9th Street. We're working on a couple of different things there, including a lease agreement that'll be entered into between the city and Fulton County LLC on that piece of ground to the west side of the rail line between 18th and 9th Street. Hope to have that probably for Andy's review within the next week or so. And hope, we would want that hopefully wrapped up by the end of April, because we'd need it probably for the submission of the DNR grant. That'd be a $200,000 grant that would go into the trail or also the Trailhead Center at 9th Street that we're planning. There won't be any cash, usually there's a 20% cash match for that. We've already raised that outside of any redevelopment funds or city funds, so we've already, we've got the match lined up for that, so there shouldn't be any out-of-pocket cash on that except, you know, grant writing. If I don't write it myself, there may be a small fee for grant writing, which typically is reimbursed on the grant anyway. Schott and I've worked on, Schott helped me with the administration of the last DNR grant, so we're kind of, we got our hands around that, I think, pretty well. We may move forward with a second OCR grant request this year for construction in the downtown district that we're kind of working on for redevelopment. And that is probably it for now. So, our main projects are the bicentennial nature trust grants, which allow us to reach out and get sort of bargain sales on properties that we have our eyes on for just open public space for the future. The theater project downtown, we're working on. The, of course, the downtown renovation projects we're working on and then also the Depot and Trail. So that's kind of what's in the redevelopment commission pipe for right now. I think that's it. Mr.'s question?
Terry?
Yeah?
Do you want to talk about our resolution while you're up here?
Sure, as the Fedco Director, yeah. As the Fedco Director, we'd like to ask for a declaratory resolution 03, 2015, designating a portion of the city as an economic revitalization area so that under Indiana code, we can request property tax abatements. revitalization area so that under Indiana code, we can request property tax abatements as we continue to work, you know, with the potential buyer on, on that project for the Hartshafter and Marx Building on Wabash Avenue. We kicked around a couple of different things today, but I think we have a final resolution in front of you. There's some question as to whether or not our legal description on the first page is exactly what we need, Andy, I think. And then you probably have an exhibit A that just shows the, the property outlined. And then what we would want to do if this is passed tonight is move forward with setting a public hearing for, I would imagine, your next council meeting, the end of, the end of March. I think that'll give me enough time to get the SB one documentation in from the company so we know what jobs and pay rates and investment and stuff like that we're looking at. So that's what I would present for your review.
Terry, if this resolution passes, is that, do you think you would need it sooner than that?
No.
Okay.
Okay, so the resolution, declaratory resolution number three dash twenty fifteen, and this is mainly for the old Hartshafter and Marx Building.
Right.
So we need this in order to go further, correct?
Yeah, we need this in order to move forward with the public hearing that would establish whether or not we're going to allow the property tax abatement to the, the new buyer, or to the buyer.
Okay, I will entertain a motion to go ahead and read resolution number three dash twenty fifteen. Does it need to be read by title or the entire, since we know what it is? That's up to the council, one time.
Hey, Andy. Resolution?
Yeah.
Entirety or by title?
You can, you can, if you have agreement, you can read it by title only.
Well, it's mainly a lot of legal jurbies, so it's the Hartshafter and Marx Building, in black and white. We know it's that building, so go ahead.
I make a motion to the reading of resolution number three dash twenty fifteen by title only.
I do have one question. Terry, to the, is that to the south here? Where it cuts kind of in mid parking lots?
Yes.
That is where the parking lot ends for that Hartshafter and Marx, and then the rest of that is owned by someone else, and that's the part that's being, that's the part that's being used by the nickel plate currently.
The part that's being used by the nickel plate is the southernmost portion, the piece that's actually out of the yellow frame box there.
Okay.
The one-thirds, yeah. Whitley Manufacturing owns the grass lot on the corner and the, about the first third of that parking space. And then we have one owner that owns the building and then the parking to the north and the parking to the south. It's two parcels. One parcel is the building and the parking to the north, and then the second parcel is about two-thirds of the asphalt parking on the south side of the building.
Thank you.
Sure.
Then I will second the motion.
Okay, all in favor to read by title only? Five, zero, okay? Declaratory resolution number three dash twenty fifteen, resolution designating a portion of the city of Rochester, Indiana as an economic revitalization area. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to pass resolution number three dash twenty fifteen.
Make a motion for the adoption of declaratory resolution number three dash twenty fifteen.
Second. All in favor to pass resolution three dash twenty fifteen? If you are, raise your hand. Okay, five and zero passes.
Okay, we'd like to do the, the public hearing at your next council meeting.
I was gonna say, not this meeting.
At the March council meeting, workout? Okay, would you like, would you like that?
Get it on the agenda.
Six o'clock, or you wanna get those done first?
Six o'clock, same time as regular.
I just have to publish the time and the date, place, all that stuff.
Six o'clock.
All right, you got it, thanks.
Here. Chase, do you have anything on solid waste or animal adoption?
Uh, yeah, animal, we had made for the animal shelter.
They dropped off their reports, they were in the pack.
Oh, were they, okay.
Good.
Just a few things. The month of December, the county land fund received twenty thousand, three hundred eighty-six tons of waste in twenty-four working days for a daily average of eight hundred forty-nine tons. Fulton County accounted for three thousand, seven hundred ninety-six tons. The rest of Indiana contributed sixteen thousand, five hundred ninety, ninety tons and zero tons around the state. The host fee was twenty-five thousand, eight thirty-three, sixty-five. No one but Key Waste bid on the curbside collection contract offered in Kewaunah and Fulton. So solid waste is still planning on continuing the collection if the weather cooperates. Akron opened up bids last week, and a company out of Claypool bid, their bid was around four fifty, which exceeded the three dollars and ten cents for the board agreement, so it was rejected. I believe Doug had gotten a call again. The town received the call from Advanced Waste Solutions, suggesting that they might be able to get their bid down to the three dollars and ten cents, but wasn't for sure. And they would be able to offer that to all three towns, so I think they're still waiting to see what happens there. Doug has explained to the board that he has officially set a retirement date for himself. His last working day is going to be Friday, September eleventh, twenty fifteen. He expects to be here until then unless something drastic changes. He'd like to make sure someone is capable of doing the record job, so he's going to spend some time with Stacy to learn, for her to learn some of the job that he does. And then Mark, do you want to explain a little bit about the recycling or recycling that the city wants to do?
We're looking into going ahead and picking it up with the street department, is what we're doing. And we're negotiating with solid waste if they want to kick in some of the funds to help offset some of our part-time help. So we're looking at having a trailer built like they had before and just doing it with our city part-time workers to keep it going. And we're gonna try it, see how it goes, and, you know, it's a pilot project, and we're gonna try to go ahead and do it in-house. And we're negotiating, negotiating with solid waste, and next meeting we'll know more about what kind of money, if they're gonna kick in, and need to help pay for our part-time help, because we will have to pay some of our people to do it. But we, by buying a new trailer, we can utilize that down the road to haul our equipment on anyway, because we don't have that type of a trailer, so we'd have it built like nineteen foot this way. It's been recommended by Mark Floor that works there with Warren Lees, and the solid waste doesn't have a truck to do it, so we talked about doing it in-house at the solid waste, but they've hired some part-time help also, since they have more coming into the building now, since it's not being picked up, people are bringing more recycling to the solid waste. So we're going to try to get this off the ground here in the middle of March maybe, or the first of April, depends on when we can get this trailer built and when we get things rolling. And then what we would do is, we'd still pick it up every two weeks, but if the city does it, we'd rather try to do it every week, but it'd still be a cut at your house. We'll do like Mantle Heights and the lake one week, and then we'll do precincts one, two, and three the next week. So you'd still be picking up as your homeowner, you put it out once every two weeks, but that way we wouldn't have to pay overtime, because the way Doug Oak said that the previous contractor, they spent about fifty-five hours a week to do the Rochester area. But I don't know if that was including Rochester Township, but we would not be picking up Rochester Township, we would only be picking up city residents. So Ford and Edition in Rochester Township, they would be on their own, but we'd only pick up city residents. So we're gonna try it and see how it goes, and by the time leaf season gets here next year, we'll have a handle of how it's working, and that would be, might cause us some issues, we don't know, but by then we should have it down to a science, hopefully, that we'll be minimizing our hours, so. And we're gonna try it, see how it goes, and there's no guarantee, but, you know, we feel that as myself, being the mayor, I think it's my due diligence to try to keep the green in the city and pick up recycling, because a lot of elderly can't take it to the solid waste. And I talked to a lady that lived over at Water Haven, there's no room to put a dumpster there for, you know, recycling, so, you know, it's, we'll, we'll see how it goes, and nothing measured, nothing gained, but if, I think we can make it work, so.
Do we have any projections on what the cost will be?
Well, actually, it's, it's hard to weigh the cost. Well, the labor, we had it broke down as to that if we paid the labor, it would be so much per hour, but they only figured our labor at nine fifty, but our labor costs more than that, because we have social security, we have Medicare, we have not benefits.
And our part-time employees per hour are more than that.
Right, so that's what we gotta look at, and, because I said it's about paying us the same amount that they pay the contractor. Well, contractor wouldn't make a profit, because he would be doing it again if he was making a profit, two dollars and seven cents per pickup. So we're gonna work that out, but if, we'll see how it goes, but I still think we need to try to incorporate it in with picking up our recycling. We, we drive by all the time picking up grass clippings and sticks, so it's within our budget, we're gonna shoot for it and try it, and if it doesn't work, then we'll go a different direction, but I think we can make it work, so. We've got, we've got the equipment, other than a trailer, you know, so it might be a little bit more gas and that, so we'll see how it goes, and we'll just have to see, I mean, if we have to switch a little something in the, we get to the end of the year and we don't have money, we might not be able to, we might have to take from one line item to pay the other, but down the future, you know, it might be where we ask for a charge, you know, but I don't know. But right now, we're gonna do a complimentary, let's see. Try it. If it doesn't work, we'll know in a couple months. So, it's worth a try. I'm tired of taking it over there myself, because it doesn't get taken over every two weeks. It gets stockpiled, you know, and a lot of people aren't doing it, so, I mean, I think it's important that we do this for everything. But that's a short version of explanation, so if anybody has any questions, you can...
Everybody's getting calls on.
It, it's a popular item, really, you know, so.
Now we got a call, yeah. Now we got a call, yeah. You can forward it to him.
I got your number.
Eric gets a key. There he goes. That's right.
I forward all that bird.
I think it'll work out good, I think they'll be able to handle it. Get more community helpers. Do you have anything else?
No, no, that's it.
Any questions for Chase? If not, let's move to Tom Butler, do you have anything up to EMS, EMA?
The tree board, actually, we, we did meet, had someone from State come up and talk about some grant possibilities, and we viewed our Tree City and all that, was very complimentary what the city has done. Also mentioned two things where you already have a budget, if we were to take like our, the budget we use for, for planting trees, submit that, submit this grant to some action grant, we could double what we're receiving trees, so could be looking into that, sound like a good program. EMS reported their revenue for January was forty-six thousand, fifty-four dollars and thirty-two cents. Their total runs, Akron thirty, Kewaunah thirty-nine, and Rochester a hundred and nineteen, total of one eighty-eight. EMA, L E P C, Local Emergency Planning Committee, met as well on the nineteenth. One of the big things they talked about was the P-25 upgrade. The city's in good shape with, between the PV and the fire department, we purchased the dual-band radios, which I think they're still gonna have to be re-retouched, but as far as being capable to do all this reprogramming, it's just a, a touch with a computer, kind of put it in the eight-hundred, they have different trunks, so they're gonna readjust the trunks for us, but both our departments are in, in fine shape for that. Again, talking about doing a, a county exercise, they wanted to do a hand-on instead of a tabletop this year. Talked about NIMs compliance again, and then the fire departments are working on redoing some of the neutral aid mappings. There were some discrepancies on, on who was gonna respond, as the second department in what area, so that, we're gonna work with the dispatch on that and get better adjusted on that. That's about it. The ambulances did have, or EMS did have some issues with the ambulances they purchased used, some airbag issues and compressor issues, but they did purchase used, but they've got that worked out and up and running well, so all, all four vehicles that they own are on the road and, and running well. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Tom. Any questions? We'll come back to park board. Burns, park board?
Yeah, park board, man. February night, a little lamb daycare came in and they want a bike ride on July twenty-sixth out to City Park as a fundraiser for a couple hours, and they want to put it, they had quite a discussion about traffic control. Instead of closing the park, they wanted to close the park, and you really can't do that with Manitowoc Mountain and all that kind of stuff available the other direction. So, but they're still gonna go ahead with it, and they're just going to have to get some of the people to help out with a little traffic control out there and parking the cars and this type of thing. Fly fishing is also on the agenda with the park board again this year, like it was last year, at about April eleventh. And that fellow comes from Plymouth, he's a former principal of the Plymouth School System, teaches fly fishing, and he's coming down again. They got into this rubber mat business and the cost of rubber mats for the Manitowoc Park, Manitowoc Mountain, and as you've been out there underneath the swings, the kids drag their feet when they swing, and it digs a big hole, and all that chip wood goes flying, and there's, it gets deeper and deeper and deeper, and so they proposed putting a mat down, filling that up, putting a mat down, and then putting some chips on top of that, so when their feet go back and forth, they're on a heavy, real heavy mat, and it will only dig those holes. And also coming out of the slides, Manitowoc Mountain, there's a, that drop is quite, and the kids kick all that out of there, and it gets deeper and deeper, and that drop gets higher, and the little kids have quite a fall, so they're gonna do the same thing there. They're gonna put mats underneath there, and then put, fill the holes and put the mats on top of all, and then put chip on top of that. Rubber mats, they have found, for Manitowoc Mountain, six by four, by six, by two, something like that, or three by three. These things are around five hundred and sixty dollars apiece, and they need six of those, and for the swings, four for the slides, somewhere around, they go put about two thousand dollars in some of these mats. All the mats, they can pick them up over at Warsaw, and what they did is, they went to a conference down in Indianapolis and found people that make these mats, and they get them over to Warsaw, and so it's not that far. They get actually, we could go actually go and pick them. They're very heavy, so when you think of a mat, think of something soft, these are really heavy rubber mats, just keep the kids from, you're gonna wear out the shoes, but gotta keep the kids from digging the holes. Anyhow, they, they had quite a talk about that. They need a new park mower, so they're going to look into that. The restroom by the ball diamond has to be not taken out, and also, there's another restroom down there, it's cement block, it has electricity in it, so they gotta get the electricity cut off before they can demolish that. So they gotta get the electricity cut off before they can demolish that block building, that restroom. It's been boarded up for years, sits on the corner down there as a consequence. Most of the fellows who use the basketball court go over the ball diamond, battering, and there's a restroom over there. So it's functional. So they're gonna see what they can do, possibly put up another new restroom, and these are extremely costly to do, which they have found out, and they're discussing that, too. The pier, the beach, they've got bids on that. Piers have disintegrated quite a bit, and plastic piers that they weather and they crack, and the geese, they stain badly. They turn purple by the year's end because of the geese. And they can do better with aluminum piers and rather than the vinyls. And they are looking at something like that, and to tune about $6,000. And which they would go out three sections and then three sections across, otherwise three sections out, and then at the end, put two more sections on that end one, which would be a three section. And that would get them out away from the rocks and so on, and maybe the kids would quit diving off the dam and playing over there. That's dangerous. So they're, they're talking about several different things they got in the works. That's about it.
Thank you, Burns. Any questions? Did I forget anybody? We're all gonna end here, right? Okay, let's move on. Any unfinished business or new business from any council members? Andy, do you have anything?
The litigation on the Abbott property continues. There are other attorneys involved, so this won't be a default judgment situation. I'll keep posted on that. Mark asked me to check and see if the state had any de facto regulations on a city for collection of recycling. And the short answer to that is none that I could find. I mean, yes, there are regulations, but I mean, a mandate to a municipality, thou shalt make sure there's a way to collect recycling. No, not what I could find, so. That's, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Andy. Any ADA concerns? Or do you have anything else you want?
Yeah, I, I've got some calls. This is the house that the gentleman came in to the console and talked about on Eighth and, corner Eighth and Monroe, it's a big old greenhouse. It's got varmints in it again, and.
Eighth and Monroe or Seventh and Monroe or Tenth and Monroe? I think there's one he owns on South Monroe and.
I'm going the wrong direction again. Okay, I'm going the wrong direction again.
I can't remember.
It's in that direction, so it'd be Tenth and Monroe.
We've had it here before.
Right, and the gentleman came in and owns it. His wife.
Passed away.
Passed away, and she did have it. And he said he was going to, he actually lived there one time, he said, and he was going to fix it up, but he didn't have the money, if you remember correctly, to do anything. Well, it really has become a problem again, and there's a lot of varmints in the thing. They can refuge this winter, and it's in bad shape. Also, the burnout farther down in Monroe. Now, it goes down to, and I can't tell you the address on it because.
Porteen something.
Yeah, and they have done nothing with that. They boarded up the lower floor, but the upper floor is open. The windows are still out of it, and the back part of it is still open.
I just talked to Casey about it earlier, actually, and she said that she was sending a letter, I think this week, to him because she hasn't heard anything from the council about that one and then about the one on the Kessler household.
Yeah. Those are the two.
Did we give him so much time last time he was in here?
Yes.
You gave him 12 months.
Yes.
And I did, Mrs. Brown had contacted me, and I asked Andy about that. If, the only way that you can bring it back in front of the councils is Casey cites him again for that property. So I did mention it to Casey to take a look at that property again, to see what we could do or couldn't do, but I did let her know that there was a 12-month reprieve that you, that the council had gave Mr. Kessler on that property.
What's that on?
I'm sorry, it'll be June, I believe.
This June?
Or July, I'm sorry.
July, so it'll be right around the corner then, so.
We still don't know who owns the burnout.
It, yeah.
Yeah, that's the one that changed the ownership, somewhere right in the middle of the process.
Of the burnout? Yeah. Casey knows who it is. I think she's got the burnout.
Okay.
I think the owner was different than the tenant. I think it was a mother-son thing, and then somehow he got a hold of the insurance and he left, leaving her with the abandoned property and a burnout estate.
That's the one.
That's, I mean, that's the way I recall it.
So we need to follow up with Casey and see if we can pursue that for an unsafe building? I mean, that's, we've talked about that before. Do you recall on that burnout building? Where we were at?
I don't, I don't recall.
Did you follow up on it?
That's the one I think that was Swafford, Swafford property.
That's the one that was by the elementary school, isn't it?
By Columbia School.
Right through, yeah.
And that's.
And there's nicely kept property on the other side of it, on one side of it there.
To the south.
Yeah, to the south. Those people are pretty impressed there.
Right.
They can keep their property.
Let's follow up with Casey then, and we can maybe have something for the next meeting and see where we're at. Okay? Anything else?
Mark, I do have something that I did not get on the agenda, but I gave to each of the council members and you, a proposed early debt payoff. This is something I don't want you guys to take action tonight unless you feel so moved to do it. You know, we can always discuss it at the next council meeting with the other members present. I got to looking at our general obligation bond. It'll be paid off in December of 2017. I contacted the bank.